Hi Kevin.
Hey Deb, how you doing?
Good, good. Happy Easter week.
Happy Easter to you. I hope everything went well.
Very, yeah.
Did the kids come into town?
I went to see Tara.
And she lives where now?
She lives in Fairport, just outside Rochester.
Do you remember, uh, Bill Callow, he used to be principal, assistant principal at South and then he was assistant, he was on the school board in Williamsville.
Okay.
He became superintendent and, uh, in Fairport for a long time.
Uh huh.
Yeah, yeah, he, uh...
Very nice area.
Yeah, Fairport, it's a great school district also.
Good, they love it.
Yeah, good, well. And your son, did he, uh...
He's here, yes, he married Erin Conway.
Oh, that, oh, what a great young lady. She, uh, quite a step dancer back in the day too.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Make sure you say hi to them for me, okay?
I will.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're great kids. You know, I'll tell you Deb, I remember all the kids.
Yeah, isn't that something?
Yeah, I mean, forty-eight years, you think I'd forget some of them, but I, I remember them all.
Amazing, amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, great school, great district. Yeah, they've got two children now. They just had one baby a year ago March, so they had a COVID baby. And she just turned one.
Okay.
She's fine and...
And where will she go to school?
They, uh, let's see, I gotta think now. They'll go to Maple East.
That's where my son Kevin teaches.
Oh, okay, fantastic, look great.
Yeah.
Look great.
Case, well, he's for Z, K through four. Yeah, boy, I hope we're back to normal by then.
I know, I do too.
No, just, uh, there's talk that they, they're gonna start increasing a little bit more after the Easter break. I hope they do. You know, it's just been tough on everybody.
Very challenging. Aren't you glad you're retired?
No, I miss it. I miss it a lot, you know I do.
I mean, but with the COVID, teaching in COVID, that's it.
Yeah, that would be hard, yeah. Did you get your shots yet?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, so did I. Yeah, I got, I got mine in Salamanca.
Wow, that's a new one.
Yeah, well, I was scheduled in ECC and they shut it down and then UB and they canceled them. Then I had things set up in, uh, oh God. Put, uh...
Erie?
No, way out, they had, they had a Rhonex.
Oh my gosh, oh, yeah, I did hear about that.
Um...
Uh, lay up north.
Yeah, Potstam.
Yeah.
Potstam. And, uh, and then MJ, my fiancee, was getting her hair done in, in Salamanca and some lady came in and said, hey, I got my shots from the Rite Aid and, and MJ, you know, she, uh, got online, got them there, got it the next day and I got on the waiting list, I got it a week later.
Fantastic, yeah.
And you know, cuz my cousin Carol, the one who walks around the village.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, I was able to get her shots in Salamanca too.
Okay, great, great. But are you still in Elocottville?
I'm, I'm in Rushford right now. I, we, we ended up, I still have a place in Elocottville. But we bought a, a little lake house in Rushford and we just had the internet put in today. Armstrong is the internet company, so this is the first, uh...
Oh, and it's working great.
So far.
Good.
So far.
Knock on wood.
Not only light behind me though, looks like I'm in a shadow. Maybe I should turn the other way. Yeah, I'm gonna turn out.
Okay.
You know that look?
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it looks a little better.
Yeah. A very pretty place.
I, I understand Kate's not gonna make it tonight, her grandfather died.
Yes, that's what she said, yeah.
COVID because she said, she mentioned something there's...
Yeah, she alluded to please everybody get your vaccines.
Yeah.
Because COVID is still...
Yeah, it just, I just...
Yeah.
Anytime I hear somebody passing away right now, I automatically think that's what it's from.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think that's what, uh...
Alluded to that, yes.
Tell you what, you know, it's... The, uh, too many people, too many people died from it.
Yes, oh my God.
Yeah, it's, uh, I just...
Your kids are well, take it.
Kids are, yeah, kids are doing well. All teaching, you know, teaching, uh, Wednesday, everyone seems to be just, they're supposed to be doing, uh, deep cleaning on Wednesdays at the schools. I don't know if that, how that's going. But they teach, you know, A through, I think, L on Monday and Tuesday. H J K, L, or A through K and then L through, um, Z on Thursdays and Fridays. And Wednesday's supposed to be cleaning and I think it's, uh, virtual also, you know, hybrid.
Yes.
But, um, these kids need to get back in the school.
They do. Think of how much they've, they've missed out on, you know...
Well, not only, not only academics, but social interaction. I think, I think that's a big part of, you know, if you think kids like, let's say in second and third grade, they've missed, they list, they were out last March, they've missed most of this year. You know, you're, you're not, you're not developing yourself as a friend.
No.
You know, and...
Friends.
Right, my, my son Mike's, uh, kids go to school in the city, they go to Olmsted and City Honors. They just got back last week.
Wow.
Two days. So my, my grandson Jack, who's like eight years, nine years old, last time he was in school, it's like he was seven. You know, turned eight and then nine and he's missed, he's missed a year and, you know, a couple months of school, no friends.
Yeah.
And that, and that's what, that's what, uh...
Have a lot of catching up to do.
Yeah.
You know, but the whole, hopefully, they're young and will quickly readapt.
Yeah, well, he's gone three times already and of course, uh, he didn't have to go Good Friday, but he's, he's gone three times and he says he's met a lot of kids and made friends and, you know, so, yeah, we shouldn't be too busy tonight, are we? I, I saw the agenda.
Right, it's, it's apparently just, uh, 5800 Dr. Hurley.
Yeah, well, it's on the agenda, there's, there are some comments about, isn't there something about, uh, the, um, uh, Irishman?
They, they are tabled.
They are tabled. Oh, a short meeting then.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Well, yeah. Yeah, we'll see.
Does ZBA granted the variance to 5800 Main?
They did. Okay, so that should go quick.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any issues, you know.
We're just...
Do we know anything else about Nutally?
I'm, I'm not in the loop.
Yeah, I do, you know, when I drive, drive down to my son Pat's house, I drive past her all the time and they're working away.
Yeah.
But I'm thinking they're only gonna get to a certain point and then they're gonna, according to him, doesn't have the money to keep going, you know.
Right, I forget what happened with the IDA, they, I know they applied.
Yeah.
I don't, can't remember now.
I don't, that, that might not happen unless there's some type of...
I don't know.
I don't know if there's federal grants or whatever.
Yeah.
But, uh, you know, you know, the, the one unit he built, it's, it's pretty nice. The only thing I, I brought it up last meeting, it's, it's not the full brick. Which...
It's not full brick?
No, it's the, the short brick, it's the thinner brick. Cause I, I saw a guy, I saw a bricklayer working there and I stopped and I was talking to him and I'm thinking, yeah, it's not full brick, he's, no, it's a short brick. And, uh, I think that got by us. We never, we never discussed that, uh, when we opened that project.
So it's like, um, thinner?
Yeah, it's thinner, yeah.
Like thick, a thin brick?
Yeah, I don't, it doesn't look, you can't really tell. I got a good look at it, you can't really tell that it's thinner, but, you know. And then, uh, trying to think what else is going on. We, we haven't heard anything about, uh, the local homes, have we?
I, I not, I have not. Again, I'm not in Village Hall.
Well, you, you mean the litigation or, or... Governor, are you asking what the status is?
Yeah, what's the status is?
It's been briefed or waiting for a decision.
Yeah.
Or it's slow.
All decisions haven't been made on that yet?
What do you mean, by the village they have?
Yeah, that's what I mean, you know, we have, what are they, what are they, what are they waiting for?
They're waiting for the court to decide, so, so, so people sued those, and all the approvals.
Yeah, okay. Alright. Hey Tim.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
We have some people missing tonight, I understand.
Yeah, I left my list at home on accident, but last I heard, we'll have to ask Amy if she got ahold of Ron, but, um, we hadn't heard from Ron.
I never got ahold of Ron.
Okay, so...
I sent an email, I called him, left a message, I just tried calling again, I cannot get through to him.
Alright, so I'll try again later this week and maybe we'll mail him something, cause his email was completely disconnected. It's like he just fell off the face of the earth for some reason. So I don't know what happened, but, and then, uh, Wes Stone's out tonight, Chuck Rizone is out tonight.
Kate?
Kate's out tonight, she was gonna be here, but she had a death in the family. Um, there you go, who else? I don't know if Matt is gonna be on or not. He said he was gonna be out of town and he'd be on if we needed him to. But I hadn't confirmed with him.
Do we have a quorum then?
Think we barely do.
We have four. We have four, which is, you know, we're a quorum. You need a quorum to prove anything, so we'll, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
That's why I was hoping Matt would be on so that we could have five, but, um...
Yeah, do you know, is the Irishman doing anything tonight?
No, he called me, um, around three o'clock and asked to table it, so they're, they are gonna try to proceed with their application. They did some redesigns, but they still have to go back to ZBA. For a couple parking spots less, so they were able to squeeze a couple more in, but he didn't wanna come here and muddy the waters before he got to ZBA, so. He's asking to table, so we just have acular facial then.
Do you know, is there, uh, is their new design gonna mean that they don't use their parking lot for summer seating?
Um, he didn't, I think they...
Is that how they're giving their extra spaces?
They still would like to use the front spaces, but I think he's, I think we're just gonna word the application different to ZBA so that they vote on the extreme instead of the less, I don't know, I gotta talk to Dave. He said he'd call me once we get ZBA set, so. Basically, he, he got it so they could have eleven spaces in the summertime and they'd be five short of the requirement in the winter, or the, sorry, vice versa. They'd be five short of the required twelve in the summer and they'd be one less than the required spaces in the winter.
Okay.
Again, we're still, he was gonna send his guys out to do an actual measurement of the inside of the building, cause like I told him, I only did a abstract measurement, which he was fine with at the time, but I told him, if you can do a real, actual measurement of the square footage of that building, you may be at eleven spaces required, cause I'm doing it off of GIS and, you know, I may be a couple hundred square foot over based on just the, the box I'm drawing around the thing on the map on the computer, so he's gonna do that this week and then hopefully we can have a firm for a number for ZBA for, um, their next meeting, so.
Do you know the date of that meeting?
Um, it's the third Wednesday, I think it's, it's the twenty-first of April.
Okay.
So not next Wednesday, but the Wednesday after.
Do we have a way to contact Matt, see if he's gonna log on?
Matt, E2?
Oh no, Matt Carson.
Oh, um, let me see.
Matt E2 had emailed me and said he had conflicting meetings, so he was gonna be running late and I think kind of in and out.
I don't... Do you have your contacts list there?
Uh...
According to what I...
So just message me his phone number, cause I don't think we really want that on the record publicly.
Didn't say he was, didn't he say he was gonna be out of town?
He said he was gonna be out of town, but he said he could sign on if we needed him to, so I just figured I'd try and send him a quick message, but... I just don't wanna say the number over the airwaves here and have it recorded for all time.
So, well, I sent you his name, hold on, I'll send you his number too.
Okay, perfect.
I'll see if we can get him on. Hey Chip, I had talked to Deb, I'll ask you, cause it's planning board related. I had talked to Deb about, um, planning board and she had brought up that we should kind of go over rules and like what expectations are as far as alternate. Do you have anything on that?
So, um, what I have on that, I guess, is, and you're breaking up a little bit, but I think I understand what you're asking, basically, sort of rules of running the meeting and participation by alternates, is that the question?
Yeah.
So, alternates sit, you know, when needed, um, which under our code is broader than the New York State Village law, which is really, anytime there's a, somebody not participating, we can seat an alternate. In terms of whether an alternate who is not officially seated can participate in the meeting, frankly, that's up to you guys. I, I mean, New York State law absolutely does not dictate how you run your meetings, other than that you need a quorum to conduct business and you are, require a majority vote of the entire board to take action. Beyond that, you can really make your own rules, so I don't have an opinion and as to whether or not you want to include a non-seated alternate in discussions or not, but again, I think that's entirely up to the board. Um, it's not really, there, there's no legal answer to that question, it's whatever you think is, makes sense for conducting your meetings.
Is there any regulation on, oh, I'm sorry, is there any regulation on having alternate sit? Like, say it turns out six members can attend a meeting, do we have to get an alternate to fill that seventh spot?
Yes, do you have to? I mean, I think the expectation is that you would, because what our law authorizes is that the alternate can be seated whenever there's less than a full board. And I think it's, I mean, I guess, can, can...
It's good policy.
I, I've never seen a situation where we didn't sit, seat an alternate if the alternate was needed to make a full board or even less than a full board. In other words, as long as there was less than a full board participating and an alternate was there. Um, but is it phrased in a way that you have, I, sorry.
Pay me on the question of having a alternate participate while they're sitting in the audience, I, I don't think we've ever had that. I mean, I've done this for, I've never heard an alternate get involved in discussions when they've sat out in the audience.
Why not?
I mean, I... I think part of it is...
Why not?
Zoom it.
They're sitting, they're listening, why shouldn't they get involved?
I'm not saying they should or shouldn't, but I think Wally, you've been around long enough, I don't, have we ever had a meeting where one of our, our alternates participated when they were sitting in the audience?
I, uh, yeah, as recently as last month, I'm wondering why this is coming up all of a sudden too. Uh, yeah, and we had it of, more than a few times even prior to last month. But why are we restricting? We've had people speak, uh, previously who have been sitting in, uh, yeah, uh, who've been sitting in... Yeah, uh...
Maybe on Zoom, maybe on Zoom, but I don't remember in-person meetings.
Yeah, that, I think that's why it's coming up now, is that on Zoom it's one thing, but when we're at the board meeting, we were just wondering what the precedent should be. That's, that's the only reason why we're asking. Like, I, I know what happens on Zoom, that makes sense, cause they're, you know, we're all, we're all here, but when we're in the audience, it does, you have seven seated members. Ultimately, you're just bumping it up to an, possibly a nine-member board, which isn't technically the intent of it either.
And I think, you know, typically, if we're meeting in person and we have a seven-person board, we don't typically have audience participation during a meeting. Right? And at that point, they're almost part of the audience, or however you wanna phrase the people who come to see what's going on. Right? But I think my, my question was more aimed towards, if we have an ongoing, if we have an ongoing project before this board, say like Bloker, which lasted, you know, a year. And you have seven people who are sitting for the majority of that, but then there's a meeting that somebody can't attend or two people can't attend, is it appropriate to have an alternate sit for a meeting that we may be making a decision on, if they haven't been there through the entire process?
We lost Chip for a minute, so I don't think he heard that whole question.
That's a good point, Amy.
Right, and that's my concern, it's not a...
I, I don't know.
If an, if an alternate hasn't participated in the entire process and then one month we're gonna vote on something, is it appropriate to have them vote on it, or is it appropriate to just leave that seat blank for that meeting? In the case of an ongoing, ongoing project.
That could be, yeah, I'm sorry, maybe Chip should answer that, but I, I'm saying, yeah, for, uh, regular seated board members, is that, uh, appropriate too, if you've got an ongoing issue and, uh, a, a regular board member, uh, misses one meeting? And I felt that kind of, uh, reluctance in missing a meeting and then voting, uh, on an ongoing issue at a later date. Um, yeah, I, uh, I, I, I think you could extend that to just the regular, uh, seated board members too, should they participate in, uh, an ongoing, uh, concern if, yeah, uh, if they haven't been present for each and every meeting where that concern is, uh, put forth to the board.
I think that's a very valid point too.
Yeah, I mean, so again, I got, I got bounced off, I'm, I'm for a little while, so I'm not sure how much I missed, but, um... Yeah, I mean, what you need to keep in mind is anytime there's less in a quorum, you, you know, if, if somebody's not allowed to vote, whether it's a regular board member or an alternate board member, that's essentially a no vote. So, I, you know, again, I'm not telling you that it's legally required necessarily, but I don't see much advantage in having a rule to say, I mean, unless you're gonna insist that you're only gonna vote when everybody who is involved has sat through every meeting on that project. And of course, we don't have that many projects that go thirteen, fourteen months. Like, one thirty-five Evan Street did, but that's, that's frankly, one of the reasons we have a broad alternate authorization. Again, the village, the, the default rule under the village law is only to allow alternates to sit when there's conflict. When a regular board member. The village purposely, under its home rule authority, broadened that to allow an alternate to sit for any reason that there's a vacancy. Um, and I think that was in recognition that, again, it's a seven-member board, small village, you know, there's gonna be vacancies from time to time, we've certainly seen that, so. You know, the other thing to keep in mind, although this hasn't been our practice typically, is the planning board does not have to make a decision on the night that a thing, that something is presented to them. So, you know, there's a record that is established and planning board members, be they regular board members or alternates, if, if alternates are seated, um, can take time to review those materials and including materials of things where that member may not have been present. So, I, I'm not telling you this is necessarily legal, you know, what you can and can't do legally. I would just, I, more practical advice, I guess, from my perspective is, if you've got somebody who can make an informed decision, even if maybe that they haven't been in every sing, single meeting, it, it's better off than, than just having no participation and an automatic no vote.
Okay. Thanks Chip, thanks for the perspective.
Sure.
Um, well, I guess, so getting down to our agenda, we only have the one item on the agenda for 5800 Main Street and, um, I hope everybody got the email I had sent out about ZBA, that they were given a variance to not have to move their building and, uh, built a two-story. Tim, I think you had, you had made the, uh, judgment call that they have a functioning second story for part of that building, so that didn't really apply to them. So for us, there's no site plan issue because they do not fall under that criteria, having gotten their variance, and so we're strictly looking at their architectural review again. Um, we didn't get new materials, correct, Tim? So we're going off of what we had from last month as well?
Correct, um, I, she sent the lighting stuff, but I think I forwarded, but if not, I'll share it up on the screen. Did you get those, that email? The gooseneck lighting that she...
I don't think so.
If not, I'll pull it up, that's the only thing that she... Yeah, you asked for lighting details, which she shared, um, I'll pull, I'm trying to pull it up right now.
Okay.
If you wanna vote on the minutes from last month while I do this.
Well, we haven't officially started.
Sorry, I, sorry, yeah, I'm ahead of myself.
We'll start at seven thirty.
Yeah. Uh, let's see.
The only thing I, I would point out again, I, I agree, based on what they presented to the ZBA and the variance they got from the ZBA, essentially all they're looking for right now is architectural review. Um, if, however, in the future, they wanna do anything with respect to that parking lot, either in front or in back, um, that could trigger, uh, you know, some site plan issues that would require them to come back, if they're not touching the parking lot, including the fact that, you know, that curb cut issue and, and a bunch of other issues with respect to the parking lot. But they're, from what I understand, aren't proposing to do anything with respect to that right now.
Can you see that?
Yeah.
Okay, so the, the red one, red highlighted one is the ones they're proposing for the front of the building. And then there's a, I'll pull that back up in a minute. But there was this one that I believe is going over the sign, which is a directional, like facing... like faces back towards the building.
Yeah.
To eliminate the sign. If you can see.
Right there. Have they proposed a sign?
Um, I, no, not specifically, not that I recall.
The signage they're proposing is the one that's on the facade of the building at the moment.
Right. I, I thought I remember her saying we were reusing the signage, but she can clarify that tonight because I unfortunately.
And it may be, it may be that it's, that it's not something that come, has to come before the planning board anyway. It may be administratively approved if they stick with. That's why I was just wondering what they, if they had proposed.
They could reuse it, but if they did go for new, I, I do think it's over the sixteen square feet, but I'd have to do the calculation on it. I know they had talked about maybe doing new faces for the pole sign, but I think from what I remember, new faces are allowed as long as you don't modify the sign. But we hadn't got that far yet, um, from what I remember, but. I'll go back to the other ones.
Two different styles of light.
Yeah, one's for the light. And these are for the other portion of the building. Which are the traditional goose necks, like we've seen in other spots of the village from what I can tell.
Okay, did you get, um, did you get any information on where they will be on the building?
Um, I didn't.
I know Krista can answer that for us.
Yeah, she can answer. I, let me go back to this.
The, would you like me to answer?
Sure.
Okay, um, then time is to have the goose neck lights on the brick columns between each of the storefronts mounted roughly about eight or nine feet above the concrete. Like the finished surface of the sidewalk. Um, and then the lighting for the signage is, is just to illuminate the, the name of the business as well as the address.
Okay, so there'll be two separate lights, one for the name and one for the address.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Say that again, Kevin?
What is the height of the facade from the sidewalk?
To the top here?
No, to the bottom of it.
Um, it's somewhere around ten, I want to say. Hold on.
Tim, don't we have a, a minimum, is it eight feet for the lights?
The signage is dictated. I don't know that the lights are.
I'm talking about the goose necks.
Yeah, I'd have to look. I don't recall off the top of my head, but I can pull it up in a minute.
Okay.
Um, so to the bottom. I think it'd be to here. So it looks like eleven feet. If I'm reading this right.
The.
It's this side. It's over here. It's eleven foot six to the bottom and then another four foot seven-ish is the top section where the signage is. Is that right, Krista?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay.
What, what the code requires is the building-mounted lighting shall be not mounted higher than fifteen feet above grade. I don't see a minimum.
Yeah, I didn't think there was, but.
On building mount.
Yeah, so if they mount it within that eleven foot six area, they would be fine then. Anybody need to see anything else?
Well, the only concern I have is that when, when there's new builds and they're at, they're right at the sidewalk, I thought it was a minimum of eight feet.
It does.
Kevin, there is on Main Street, th- there's a New York State, it's not an, I don't think we have that in our code. I think that issue is a New York State DOT issue on Main Street, but this building is obviously way off this, way off the sidewalk.
If you, if you look at our lighting code under 112, it says fixture height shall be between eight and twenty feet in height with shorter poles along sidewalks and pedestrians and taller poles within parking. So I think that's.
Yeah, that's not, that's building, yeah, that's for poles, not for building mounted.
Yeah. It doesn't really say anything for wall-mounted.
Other than, it shouldn't be more than fifteen feet high.
Do we have anything else regarding 5800 we want to talk about before the meeting?
What about colors?
And can you bring up the color depiction again? Thank you.
If you want to see the actual color, which these are, this is pretty close, but they did drop off samples um, that I have in my office. So if you want to stop by and physically touch it and look at it, you can. Larry, you're muted.
Larry, unmute yourself.
Am I, am I good now?
There you go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Here goes my comment on colors. I think, and standing in the front of that building and looking around at the neighborhood, based upon what we've been asked to do in our training, the orange on this building stands out. If it would be on Main Street in transit, I think it would fit in beautifully. If it was on Niagara Falls Boulevard or on Sheridan Drive near Sweet Home, I think this color would be perfect for standing out. But in the midst of the village where we've been asked to have our, uh, what thinking would be more villagey, I think this orange is too Halloweenish. They should be looking at reds and blues and greens and, and things that would be more muted into a village setting.
So if, again, this is a little more orange on the rendering than it is in real life. So if you, if you do have a concern about it, I would recommend you maybe come look at the sample first, before you make that call. But again, that's, that's up to you.
Is it more of like a wood tone?
It's more of a wood tone, I would say, than an orange. Like, it's not orange, orange like a pumpkin. Like, I could see what you mean by this rendering, but it's hard to get a good depiction of it, looking at the real-life samples better.
Which we'll see next time when we're together.
Yeah, I mean, I would, I had them set out for, if we met in person today. But I do have them in my office, so if anybody wants to stop over this, we can take a look at it. You know, unfortunately, if we, if we decide that, we'd have to delay an approval, but, um.
Yeah, if I'm the only one that's concerned, then I, I'm not going to be causing a problem for the good doctor. But it might, it's just my comment as the new guy, based upon what we've been asked to do, that orange really stood out. It just doesn't look like it belongs in the village.
Yeah, again, it's just my opinion, but I feel like this, the color they chose does kind of match the main and Hertzfield building pretty good. In my, but again, I know colors are very subjective per person, so. You know, that's why I'm saying it might be better to actually look at the sample, but we'll see what the rest of the board's feeling is on that.
Anything else?
Not for me.
Wally, you've been quiet.
All right. I thought I'd said enough earlier.
Come on, there's only four of us. You got to take your turn.
I, well, the, I think Larry's comment is, is, yeah, appropriate. It does look a little, yeah, uh, bold as it's presently depicted. I, yeah. I, I would like to see, uh, uh, some of the samples, and that was always nice about having an in-person meeting. I'm hesitant to say that only because I don't want to delay things either. Uh, and Amy, I do appreciate your sending, uh, uh, the summary of the, what ZBA did last month that, yeah. Uh, yeah.
I'd like to see more coordination between us and the ZBA. I think we need to, we need to know what each of those boards is doing because we're oftentimes, you know, working on the same project simultaneously. So one, one board's decisions affect the other board. So I will try to keep attending ZBA meetings as best I can and let you guys know if there's anything going on that affects our decisions. Are we doing on time? All right, let's start. Deb, you ready?
Sure.
Okay. So we will call to order the planning board uh, meeting for April 5th, 2021. Uh, let's please begin with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And then before we begin with our business, I would like to take a moment of silence. We've lost two members that are related to either current or former planning board members this week. Um, as we mentioned earlier, Kate is not here because her grandfather has recently passed away. And I know many of you, including myself, have spent time working with the Pecat family, the Ken Toby Pecat. And last week, they unfortunately lost their daughter Abby. Um, very, very tragic and Abby was such a wonderful person and she was involved in the village too with the farmer's market. So I would appreciate if we could all join in a moment of silence to honor those two members of our community that were lost this week. Thank you. All right, Deb, to begin our meeting, could you please call roll for us?
Sure. Mr. Lester?
Here.
Mr. Pacer?
Here.
Ms. Alexander?
Here.
Mr. Rizone? Mr. Stone? Mr. Trigilio? Mr. Carson? Ms. Waterman Culpa? Trustee Etoo?
Here by Zoom.
Okay. Um, Mr. Greco?
Here by Zoom.
And Mr. Masters?
Here.
Deb, you left, you left out Larry.
Mr. Zasowski, I'm sorry.
Here.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb. First on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, which was March 1st, 2021. Hopefully everyone got a copy and was able to look through those. Are there any questions related to the minutes from last meeting?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Wally. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Fantastic. All right, on to old business. On the agenda, our only item on the agenda is log number 2021-SPV02 Oculus Facial at 5800 Main Street is before us for an architectural review. And we have Krista Troutman from Steglett Snyder here to present to us again. Krista, it's all yours.
Hey, good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I'm happy to have that opportunity to share the project again. Um, I think Tim gave me that opportunity to share my screen. Would you like me to, uh, go through the design intent, intent again, or?
I guess, has there, has there been any changes since last month? I know we just saw the lighting, which was an update. Is there anything?
There have been no changes to the design intent. Um, so we still plan on using, um, the same approach that was presented. I'm, I'm happy to walk through it again, though, just in case somebody wasn't here last, for the last meeting.
I think the only issues we had were, was the questions with the ZBA, wasn't it? And those were all okayed?
Correct. Correct. They have the, they got variants for not moving the building. Um, and so no site plan issues are triggered then. So this is strictly architectural review. This is looking at the design of the building and the materials itself.
I'm good with just that.
Okay, um, and the, the main overall intent of the project is really triggered by, um, the owner regaining some space that was previously rented to tenants and now they're trying to convert the building back into a single commercial occupancy to use for their medical practice. So the intent is really to have the exterior of the building reflect a single commercial tenant. And some of the main changes are the location of the signage as well as, you know, refacing the building with materials that are more appropriate for the village, um, setting. Uh, because currently, uh, it's mostly a masonry, a painted masonry facade with, uh, some, some areas of some EPIS system. And so we're really just proposing to reclad the building, um, so that it fits more appropriately within the village's context.
Remind me again, Krista, what is, so the, the material that's in question that's quote orangish, um, what material is that?
Oh, it's a nichi hot, it's a fiber cement rain screen that's meant to have a, an appearance of wood. This is an image from the manufacturer's website of the same color that is called that on the elevations. Um, and that would be just for the siding material, not, not the timber that you see, um, in the canopy. So it's possible. I apologize.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, it, it's possible that between, you know, importing that material into our 3D software and then rendering it and manipulating it in Photoshop that the color is not, um, true to the, the actual sample.
Yeah, and I guess my only other question would be of the, of the goose neck lights, what, what color are they?
Oh, um, we were intending black and/or like a, a dark bronze. I, I highlighted the colors, um, on the cut sheet that were the intended finishes.
Okay.
Krista, for the record, where were those lights going to be positioned? I know you mentioned it in the work session.
Um, the intent is to have them placed on the brick columns on the exterior. And so these three columns, and actually I can pull up a site for, um. So the intent would be to have them here, here, and along this column as well. It's mostly to provide lighting for pedestrians, whereas other exterior lighting is intended to illuminate the signage.
Is there any illumination on the back of the building?
Yes, um. The intent would be to use the goose neck lighting above these exterior doors as well.
And is there any illumination on the sign on the back of the building?
No, there's not.
Okay.
The back of the building does. Face a little bit more of a residential neighborhood, so. I don't know if there's any concern about, you know, over illuminating, you know, some of those.
You have a nice deep parking lot back there. I don't know that it would actually hit the residential area.
That's a valid point.
Are there any other questions for Krista?
That's good.
Okay, so I guess. Wally and and Larry, your concern was with the color of that facade. Is that something you want to wait on? Or do we think we can move forward with this? Project?
I would not want to hold, Wally, if I may, I would not want to hold up the project over that color if Tim feels it's, you know, not a true color on this print. But I'm the new guy. I wouldn't want to hold them up.
I don't know, is it a darker wood finish like Kevin's ceiling above them?
Krista, did you have, you said you had a manufacturer's website, but when you that didn't pull up when you said that, do you have that open?
Oh. Oh, maybe I just shared the PDF, that's why. Can you see it now?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
See, it's more wood like than the rendering shows as more orangey. That's that's why I'm saying the tone kind of fit with Maine and Hirschfield. But again, like I said, the color is subjective, so if you guys don't feel that way, I mean, that's my opinion.
This looks like the the wood siding project product that Sutton used on Bliss's building down by transit.
Correct, that that's what stood out to me. It's something similar to that.
And on a separate note, I mean. If there are concerns. We could provide like the full range of the manufacturers selection.
Just for everyone. For everyone. All I was going to point out for the members, board members. Benefit is what what section 11223, which is the architectural review, under the architectural review criteria. I mean, obviously, we've got design standards frankly don't actually say much about color. Actually, I'm not sure that says anything about color. Design standards do talk about complementing, you know, the village vernacular forms. Again, doesn't say it needs to mimic historical. Styles necessarily, but should complement them, but doesn't really say anything about color, but color is. What what the design, I'm sorry, what the architectural review criteria say about color and it's just among other criteria is. Is to the designs that would adversely affect. The overall design of the the building because of visual offensiveness or other poor qualities of exterior design with respect to signs. Harmony in discord of colors or incompatibility of the proposed structure, blah, 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 blah. So that's really all it says about color is is, I guess, if you felt that the color was discord. With either the rest of the building or surrounding buildings, then that could be a basis for for asking for a different color, I suppose. But really, our code does not say all. A lot about color. That's about it. It's really about the only thing it says.
I personally like the color and I think it's a nice contrast to the color of the masonry below it. It, you know, I I don't want to see buildings that are completely monotone. So I think it it does look more orange in that picture, I will say. But I do like the contrast of the wood with the darker trim and then the gray underneath. So I don't have an issue with it personally.
I'm also okay with the color.
I'll be good with it.
All right, so I guess we're ready to move forward. Would somebody like to make a motion on the approval for this? This log and this project?
I make a motion that we approve the project as we see it. I guess, is that the right terminology?
Sure.
Typically, we we try to, you know, oftentimes we said a person who's moving will say as presented or as shown on and then try to list the drawings. So that we have a very clear record as to what. What is being approved. That's a little bit harder via Zoom, obviously, but maybe. Maybe if Krista could identify the drawings here that she's presented tonight or Tim can. So that can be so those can be referenced in the motion.
And indicate the log number.
Right.
Right. So Deb, could we put something of, you know, motion to approve project 2021 dash PB 02. Oculo Facial 5800 Main Street as presented. On April 5th, 2021, and then perhaps Krista can can give us some detail on those drawings, including the lighting. If possible.
I just shared these, basically, I think if we can, because these are the ones I submitted originally, they're the dated January 28th, 2021. So I would just say, you know, when you make your motion, say per the plans presented dated January 28th, 2021. And then just reference that you're going to approve the goose neck lighting as presented and the signage lighting as presented tonight.
So that's my only question, Tim, is I agree that that makes sense that there's a package here that we can essentially incorporate by reference. But does that include? So that that does not include the goose neck lighting, that doesn't include the lighting. So I would say.
This shows the signage lighting, but it didn't show the goose neck lighting. So again, when.
Well, but she supplied.
Yeah, there's a separate cut sheet.
Yeah, so so maybe the motion is to approve the project as presented or, you know, on that. That package that Tim you just had up there.
Yeah.
Including the lighting as depicted on whatever we can call this, the document that you're showing right now.
I just say cut sheets, these don't have a date on them, so it's hard to really reference a specific date, but.
Well, just say the cut sheet presented.
Yeah, cut sheet presented, you know, tonight. Does that make sense, Larry?
Yeah, I think the way Amy presented it, we we could even vote on it the way Amy presented it. And Larry could.
Got it all down.
And Larry can second it.
Deb, why don't you, why don't you read what you've tried to piece together there?
Deb, you read what Larry is saying.
Yeah, I've got a motion by Mr. Zasowski to approve the proposal as reviewed and presented. At the planning board meeting of April 5th, 2021. As per the proposal drawing dated 12821. And including the goose neck lighting as per the cut sheet presented. And reviewed on April 5th, 2021. But is this also for the signage? Is this a sign application?
Well, no, this, we're talking about the lighting for the signage that's on the facade and that's part of that January 28th plan. So I think that's included.
Can it include the log on that, Deb?
Yeah.
Could probably vote, we can get a second and then discussion.
I will include the log number.
Okay, so Larry, you okay with your motion?
I have a motion. That's good.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second Larry's motion.
Okay, second by Kevin. Okay, anyone have any questions or comments before we vote on this? All right, Deb, will you please take? The vote on this, please.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Mr. Zasowski?
Yes.
Mr. Pacer?
Yes. Alexander.
Who else?
Our chair.
I'll vote Deb, I promise.
And Ms. Alexander?
Yeah.
Okay, so that there are just four of us.
Yep. Captain Wally.
Wow.
So that's.
Wow, Kevin.
Motion carried four to nothing.
Mr. Pacer, the legend.
I have Lester, yes. Mr. Zasowski, yes. Mr. Pacer, yes. Ms. Alexander, yes. Am I forgetting anyone?
No.
Okay.
That's it for us tonight. All right, anyone have anything else that they'd like to discuss?
How about in the future marking these as exhibits? Tom would know what I'm talking about. As a trial attorney, yeah, as well. Yeah, I've said this before, it might be easier for everybody if we just somehow mark them in advance.
That's a good suggestion, Wally. Exhibit A, exhibit B.
And and they can also be attached to the minutes. Now, sometimes, you know, that can actually be done with a relatively small project like this, that gets harder when we're dealing with bigger projects, but. I I'm a big fan of that, you know, because the difficulty that that happens sometimes is when we, if somebody later goes back and tries to look at the minutes. Then they've got to try to match that up to drawings. So to the extent those things can actually be physically attached, I'm a big component of that.
Yeah, typically Deb Haves has done that for me when we do the minutes. She, when I give her a copy of the drawings, she normally attaches it to the. So that that's been done before, but I can definitely make exhibit numbers going forward. I'll put that in my notes.
Thanks, Tim.
Those exhibit numbers will be, you'll write them on.
Yeah, I'll I'll assign them before I give them to you. That way it's easier for you to reference. I think that's what we'll do. I'll I'll work on a process for that, just to see how we can do that, so.
Yeah, I agree.
We're all good. Motion to adjourn.
All right, motion to adjourn made by Kevin.
Good seeing you.
Board member to second that. Wally, you second?
Mr. Z.
Second.
Second by Larry. All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it. Everybody have a good night and.
Happy dingus day, everyone.
Right.
Thank you. Next month.
Okay, good night, everybody.
All right.
Good night, all.
Everybody.
Good night.
Night.